This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public meeting. Mrs. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have our mission statement that will be read by Rayleigh Abner and Taylor Merchant, third graders from Madison Park.
It's to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources and a stimulating atmosphere. Good attendance means at Madison Park means we are at school every day, all day, on time, with no early dismissals.
Thank you, ladies. Let's give them a hand again. All right.
Great job.
Next, on our agenda, a motion to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. There are two changes on the agenda this evening, both under, well, excuse me. The first will be under the label number two, excuse me, the item number two, and we need to add community comments as number two. That was omitted from the agenda, and we just need to make sure that is recorded. And then the second item will be under number, which is now number four, will be denoted as Item B under our board report, and that would be request for approval of tax abatement from the city of Trotwood for two buildings, and I'm trying to get the terminology right, 58,000 square foot manufacturing facility and the 100,000 square foot manufacturing facility. So the, the, the simple language would just be, Ms. Adams, I know you're trying to keep up with me.
Yeah.
The simple language would be request for the approval of, yeah, for the tax abatement for the two properties from gated properties globally. And there are two different resolutions that we need to pass, but we can, we can pass those via consent if, if it is the board's pleasure.
Yes.
And that's all I have as far as changes.
So I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes stated.
Motion to adopt the agenda with the changes stated.
Mrs. Adams, did you get it?
Yes.
Sorry, did you call the row?
I'm sorry. Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to adopt the agenda with the changes.
I apologize. Okay. Got it. Okay.
Do we need to call the row?
Do we call again?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to adopt the agenda with changes. Next, do we have any community comment?
We do not.
Okay.
But let the record show, we did have that agenda item this evening.
Item number two on the presentation, the financial forecast.
Okay, well, I am here tonight to present the financial forecast to you, and each of you, board members and Mr. Howard, have a black folder in front of you. On the left side of your folder, you have a paper copy of the presentation that you will see in here tonight. On the right side of your folder, you have a copy of the five-year financial forecast document, and also the notes about that document are right behind there on the right side of the folder. Okay. So tonight, I, we're going to talk about just the general requirements of the five-year forecast. So each district is required to create a forecast, and we're kind of switching to calling it the financial forecast rather than the five-year forecast because it's now going to be submitted as a three-year forecast. So there are some differences here. House Bill 96 requires a Board of Education to submit a four-year projection of operational revenues and expenditures along with assumptions to the Ohio Department of Education. So that four years would be the current year and then three years into the future. We talked last meeting about some changes as a result of House Bill 96 that impact our forecast. So the date moved for this year to October 16th. We have this submitted to the Department of Education. Next year, it will be even earlier, August 31st. And then this year and next year, the second forecast submission date is February 28th, and that's typically in May. So we had talked last month about both of those being moved forward. The requirements for our forecasts are our general fund dollars, our OO1 accounts, any special cost center associated with general fund money, any emergency levy funds, which we don't have, but if we did, those would be in this as well, and any debt service activity that would otherwise have gone to the general fund. Our district will continue to utilize a five-year forecast and planning horizon. That is part of our board policy. What we will do is we will adjust this forecast document to submit what's, what is required to the Department of Education for that current year plus three more. So the purpose and the objectives of creating a forecast would be to engage the Board of Education and the community in long-range planning and discussion of financial issues facing our schools. This forecast serves as a basis for determining our district's ability to sign certificates required by Ohio Revised Code, commonly known as 412 certificates, whenever we enter into a contract, and also to provide a method for the Ohio Department of Education and the Auditor of State to identify school districts with potential financial problems. So before we get to the numbers of our forecast, just a reminder that a financial forecast is somewhat like a painting of the future based on a snapshot of today. So the numbers that are reflected in our forecasts are, are a snapshot from the day that it was prepared. Things change every day in our tax collection and our revenue, and things change every day. We have, we have emergencies. We might need a new roof. We might need a air conditioning unit repaired that we hadn't anticipated. So there are changes that happen to this. So just as a reminder, this forecast is a key management tool, but it is something that we would need to update periodically because just like in our own personal budgets, things, things change. So in our financial forecast, the numbers tell a small part of the story, and for the numbers to be meaningful, you'll want to review the notes and assumptions. So that's that document in your folder on the right-hand side behind the financial document. And I know you're seeing this for the first time tonight, and again, this presentation is for information. You won't vote on this until your next meeting, so you'll have time to review those and ask any questions you may have. And so in general, this forecast, it just, it helps our district management to be proactive in meeting any challenges that we may see pop up as we're, we're doing this forecasting. So the key line items in our forecast that we'll, we'll want to make sure to draw your attention to, on the financial document that you have in your folder, the actual forecast document, the top section would be our revenue section. So that includes all of the income that we receive. So you'll see property tax. This is where you'll see our state funding come into play. So all of the, the revenue is there. And then the second part of the, of the document, the lower half on the backside would be our expenditures. So this includes mainly our salaries and wages, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and materials. One thing that is unique to, to our forecast in about 36 districts in the state of Ohio is that a result of House Bill 96, the state budget provided an increase to foundation funding, but completely cut out the supplemental targeted assistance line of our foundation funding. So for us, that means we are losing $953,706 annually. This is a change that we did not know about until after this school year started. The state is even going to require us to pay back the money that they had already given us as part of this funding this year. That will be reflected in our first October payment. And so you'll see here that for us, over the, the years of this forecast, that is a loss of $4.768 million, and that is something that we were not expecting. That's, that's a pot of money that's been an automatic amount that we've received for years. Just some other things to keep in mind about House Bill 96 that could impact our forecast. The governor did veto four key provisions that would have heavily impacted school local revenue and cash balances. There are still 17 proposed laws that may impact our local property taxes or valuations that could reduce funding for all public schools in Ohio. The governor's tax reform work group is reviewing ways to stop property tax increases primarily in school districts. There are proposals from this work group or future legislative actions that could impact our property tax rates, which for us are 22% of our revenue. The other thing that we just want to listen to and be aware of is the Piggyback Tax Exemption Law, which would allow county commissioners to give a second tax credit for homestead and homeowners without reimbursement. So for us, if, if our county commissioners would decide to approve this exemption, that could be a $424,000 loss in, in tax collection for us as well. So we, we know for sure that we are losing that state money, but we definitely want to keep an eye on things between now and the end of the year related to our county commissioners and at the state level as they finalize the state budget bill. This is just typical, this is just kind of a reminder for us that the state budget timeline is, is still ongoing. There are overrides, veto overrides that are kind of hanging out there. So like I said, we want to just keep an eye on what's happening because that, that could continue to impact the funding that we receive. This, this next page is kind of just a summary of some of, some of the, the vetoes that are, are happening now. So the House voted in July to override one of the governor's veto on levy types. The Senate has not considered this veto yet, or if they'll move to override other vetoes. These, these veto overrides, there are still changes that can be made through the end of December 2026. So parts of the House bill may not be final until that date. So I just saying again, this is something we definitely want to keep an eye on and pay attention to any changes as they're happening. And those are things that I think through, through committees and groups that, that members of the board serve on, that Mr. Howard and I serve on, will definitely be providing updates to those as we hear them. Some of them may not be specific and permanent updates, but we want to make sure where of what's, that we are all kept aware of what's happening because that will impact our planning. Just some notes about our forecast. If you're, if you're looking and you see that jump in line 3.010 and line 3.020, our salaries and benefits did increase in fiscal year '25 due to ESAR-funded staff positions being returned to the general fund. We knew that that happened. We knew that that was something that we would be working on. That continues through fiscal year '30 in the forecast. Those positions were, were new to the general fund, and they do create a strain on our ending cash balances. I'll return just to remind you, we weren't anticipating the loss of funding that happened after the school year started. And so, so just a reminder, we have more than one thing at play here within our forecast. The cost of materials and supplies, we increased for this year and the years going forward, and fuel costs are also up significantly. Just like in your personal budget, we know that the cost of things is going up, and so we have to account for that in our school budget as well. We talked about deficit spending, so if you look at line 6.01 in FY '24, you can see where deficit spending started, and that just compounds over the years of the forecast. We did have one bus to be purchased in the, in this forecast in fiscal year '28 and '29. And then other expenditures that you see there in the budget, the last line, other objects, 4.300, those would be our ESC expenditures and our auditor's fees. And those, we would anticipate would increase by about 2% each year, just like anything else, the service cost increases. So this graph that you see is just, just kind of a graph of the information on the document that you have. The blue line is our revenue. The red line is our expenditures, and then the green is our, our ending cash balance. And so you can see here, just in a, in a graphic form, our expenditure costs are rising. Our revenue is, is basically staying the same. And so with the rising expenditures and no increase in revenue, we're definitely seeing our cash balance be depleted there. This is, the next slide is the general fund ending cash balance. So you can see just a similar representation of, you know, our increasing expenditures and our revenues not increasing and maybe even decreasing sometimes. It's definitely going to have, we're, we're definitely forecasting a negative impact on our cash balance. This next slide just gives a summary of our estimated revenues, and so you can see that about just over 70% of our funding comes from the state level. So the state foundation, those would be those state foundation payments that we, we receive twice a month. That's where that $753,000 would have been included in that state foundation payment. You can also see that locally through tax collections, we receive 27.7% of our funding. So that's just a breakdown of where the funding comes from for us. Some districts, you may see an income tax or other things. We don't have that. We have our state foundation, and we have our, our property taxes going into our revenues. The next slide would be our expenditure. So then this is a breakdown of, of how we spend the money that we receive every year. So as is the case with most districts, the majority of our expenditures come in the categories of wages and benefits. So that's for all of our staff. Our, our next biggest category is services. So those are the purchase services that could range anywhere from, gosh, it could be the service of, of the auditor as an example. We pay, we have to pay for the professional service of somebody who provides something that we don't have here. And, and we know that in looking at some of our contracts recently, sometimes we have positions within our teaching staff that we can't fill, that we have to contract from other places. So then their salaries would be captured in that purchase service area. And then, of course, we have supplies and materials, and then those other expenses, which are those ESC costs. So that's kind of a breakdown of where we spend our, our funds. This next slide is a general fund expenditure by object. So the colors represent wages, benefits, purchase services, materials and supply, and then any capital expenditures. So we are, we are definitely being strategic as we spend our money. Like I said, as is true in most districts, our largest spend category is wages and benefits. And then in our supplies and materials, you know, we are making a deliberate effort to be up to date in the curriculum that we're offering our students, and so that falls into the supply category there. That's also day-to-day supplies like toilet paper, pencils, staples, things like that. All of those things are lumped into that category. So just kind of in summary, as an, as an overview, House Bill 96 did continue the Fair School Funding Plan for this year and for next year. So we will see an increase in our funding generally from the state. The current model does have us on the formula through fiscal year '27. Just as a reminder again, the state cutter took back $953,706 of supplemental targeted assistance each year, not just from us. They just took that entire line out of the state budget. So any district that received that is not receiving that. Those were typically more urban, underperforming districts who were receiving those funds. Our future funding is still somewhat uncertain because the Fair School Funding Act is only scheduled to go through fiscal year '27. So we're really going to want to watch and listen to see what the plan is for state funding of schools after that. We do receive 72% of our revenue from the state of Ohio. So again, just paying attention to what's happening there is very, very important to us. We do need to try to match our expenses to our revenue if we want to sustain our ending cash balance long-term. So we see, we see that green going down. This is year, year one of this forecast, and so there are definitely some, some decisions that we can make about how to make those, those things line up there. The next bullet just, just is that over the life of the forecast, that cut from the supplemental targeted assistance funding is $4,768,530. The last bullet there, under the current law and state funding, because we are projecting a negative cash balance in fiscal year '28 of the forecast, a fiscal precaution would be declared at that time if we continue at the rate that we are going. And that, that's something that is just part of state law. For us, that would mean, you know, the, the state would come in and give us a worksheet to say like, we really need and want to help you get your finances back on track so that you're, you're not deficit spending at that rate and you're not running out of money. And so like I said, this is, this is an informational presentation tonight. You have more details in your folders, and I would welcome, if you, if you look through those and have any questions for me about what you see here, you're welcome to email me and to ask me about that. I will also say that Mrs. Murdock and I, while we didn't arm wrestle, we did talk about which one of us would present first tonight, and, and we decided that I would go first because we'd like to end these presentations with some wonderful news, knowing that what I was giving you maybe wouldn't sound the best, so, thank you. Do you have any, any questions in this moment?
Thank you for being strategic.
Sure, sure. And it's a lot to take in, and I, I would anticipate if you don't have a question right now, you definitely may have one later, and I, I would welcome those. So thank you.
I would like to add that over the last several weeks, Mrs. Adams and I have, have been sitting down, and we have a regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesdays, to really start to evaluate and, and I would even want to say analyze every expenditure that this district is processing. We know, and when you look at those numbers, we know that, you know, in a few years, there is some, there's some information on, on that document, those documents that you have that show this district will be in a world of hurt if we don't start making some, making some changes. So I want to assure the board, and I want to assure everybody else that's listening, that every expenditure that takes place in this district at this point, we are going to be evaluating to, to do our best to make sure that if something has to go, we're going to try to keep it as far away from kids as possible. You know, that's, you know, that's just my disclosure statement at this point, and I'm sure we'll be talking a lot more about this as the, as the months, you know, the months change. But we, we've got some work to do with regards to digging down into, to the numbers to try to, to get this back on track. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda will be our state report card presentation from Mrs. Murdock.
Thank you. All right, so I do get the privilege of giving the better news tonight, which is exciting news about our state report card results. And I wanted to just go through the components, especially those components where we saw improvement this year, just to acknowledge that we have, we are on the right track to progress. So I wanted to start with our performance index. This is what our students did to achieve, how they achieved proficiency on the state assessments this year. So there are two graphs there. One is for 2024 and one is for 2025. And what I want to point out about these graphs is that where you see this lighter blue and gray, those are numbers that went down, and that was our untested number, and the students who scored in the lowest category, which is the limited category. So those are numbers that we want to go down. Okay, so those numbers went down. And then in these top three categories where we have proficient, accomplished, and advanced, we saw our numbers go up. So our performance index very much positively impacted this year by that student achievement. We're very excited about that movement. So we did move in our performance index from one star last year to two stars this year. Okay, and that is a testament to the hard work of our students, our teachers, our staff. Now, the second component on the report card is our progress component. So this is how much did students grow over time based on their expectations? So again, you see two graphs, one for 2024 and one for 2025. Now, the progress component is a three-year combined measure. So in 2024, last year, we were at a negative 6.06, okay, based on our three-year. Now, one bad year came off, and that was 2022, and 2025, a great year came on because our single-year progress gain index was over 11 in 2025. So that gave us that combined three-year score of 6.28. So we saw that progress score go from a two to a four, which is a very exciting achievement for our students. Progress and achievement have the most weight on our report card. They're each 25%, so 50% of the report card is from those. But there are four other components, two others that we performed better on. The first of those is gap closing, and this is a measure that measures how well we're doing for our subgroups to make sure that one subgroup is not outperforming another. So there are multiple components on this gap closing measure, and you can see those represented with the points that were possible and the points that were earned. So I want to point out a couple of things on this. First, just to point out that this is, these are points we got last year. We did get points for our gifted students' progress, okay? They made expected progress, so we got those points last year. And last year, we also got points in graduation rate. So that means that we got some points for our subgroups showing they're, meeting their goals in graduation rate, although we only got two points last year, and we got three points in graduation this year. So we did a better job meeting the needs of our subgroups, specifically our students with disability, students with disabilities, African-American students, and economically disadvantaged students. Now, last year, those were the only two categories we earned points in. This year, you can see, we earned in several more. We earned gifted identification service and, service and, gifted identification service points. That's an all or nothing. That measures whether you have identified students and served those that are identified. This can be tricky to me. There are many things that go into that measure. One change that we made to positively impact that was to make sure we knew who those gifted students were, because we do have many students entering as new students. So last year, we made the effort to look at every new student record coming in and make sure if that student was identified as gifted, then we were serving that student. And that made a difference in the services they got and in these report card points. And we had a similar situation with our English learner progress points, okay? Last year, we did hire an extra EL teacher with our growing population of English learners. That meant that we could dedicate one EL teacher to secondary and one to elementary. At the elementary level, she was able to teach English to those students, so they got instruction in English for part of their school week. That made a big difference. And this year, we have also dedicated class periods at the middle school and the high school so that our secondary teacher can do the same thing. So that's something we'll continue to work on. And again, these gap closing measures, they're, they're work. They're a challenge, but they're worth it because we're doing what's best for our students. So the last improvement is earning these math progress points. And those were specifically for all of our students, African-American students, students with disability, and economically disadvantaged students. They made the progress that they were expected in math. That's a big win. We want to see it for ELA too, but we are excited about that math. We know that that's an area where we have to grow, where they have to grow more than one year if they're going to catch up. So we're excited to see that. So in our progress overall on gap closing, we did go from two stars to three stars, okay? So we are moving up in that area. Now, the one, not a negative, but it's, oh, I wish it had happened maybe, is that we did not meet our chronic absenteeism in gap closing. And we were so close. So our goal, your goal is based on how you performed the year before. If you are over 37.5, 36.7%, then you had to reduce your number by 1.1 percentage points. So our goal for this year was 45.6. We got a 45.8, so we barely missed that. I did share this earlier with the superintendent and the admin team. If we had met chronic absenteeism, we would have gotten a four in gap closing, and we would have gotten a three overall for our report card. So we are extremely cognizant of that moving into this school year. Graduation rate is another area where we improved. We had had an 83.1 in 2024, and I think that you all remember that this component is a year in a rear. So our 2024 score is really from the class of 23. The 2025 score is the class of 24, and that's four-year and five-year rates combined. But we did go up from an 83.1 to an 85.1, so going from one to two stars in graduation. So we're excited about this. Now, there are many, many things, some of them I've mentioned, that we have done to make these improvements, but I did want to highlight the work of the PLC model because this is something that Superintendent Howard began with the district last year, and it has really kept our focus. So we have kept data in front of staffs. Principals and their staff are reviewing data at their PLC meetings weekly with their leadership teams at least monthly. We also identified essential standards for every tested subject so that teachers would know what was most important to teach. We revised pacing guides based on those essential standards. And we asked teachers to create their short-cycle assessments aligned to those essential standards, as well as implementing a district-wide writing initiative. These are the academic focus areas, initiatives that we have put into place. We will continue these, and we hope to continue that growth. And I did quote Superintendent Howard there in his press release earlier this week. He said, "When we work together, progress is possible." And we are definitely seeing that. And so this is just an in sum. This is our overall report card, and we did improve in four of the six areas, and we moved from a two to a two and a half overall, so close to a three. And that is it for me, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I do want to, to say that, you know, two and a half stars is, is good, but this district is great. And we are going to continue to, to push, to collaborate, and focus on the things that we know can continue to improve this district, like chronic absenteeism. Point, what is it, two tenths of a percentage point?
Two tenths of a point.
Equated to us this afternoon, we found out, six kids. If we would have got six kids over the hump, this would have been a three-star district. So as happy and excited as I am about that 2.5, I'm even more disappointed that we missed it by six kids. So we talked this morning with the administration, I mean, this afternoon, we had a district admin team meeting, and we, we looked at our chronic absenteeism data. We talked about some different strategies that we're going to try, especially when it comes to kids that, we talked about kids that were not showing up once they get enrolled because of maybe some transportation issues. We talked about suspensions. We talked about kids that are chronically absent. We talked about kids that are still sitting on our books, that are in our system, that are counting against us until we remove them from the system. We had some, some really, really transparent dialogue on some strategies that we are going to have to be very direct and focused on, on how we can address chronic absenteeism. Our chronic absenteeism rate decreased, but if it would have decreased by two tenths of a percentage point, Triwood Madison City Schools would have been a three-star district. Six, seven years ago, this was the lowest performing district in the state. Now, we are a, in my mind, we're a three-star district, but according to, you know, what counts, we're a two and a half star district. We are on our way up. We are going to continue to do the things that, that, that we know that are research-based to improve. But with all that being said, complacency can be a hindrance. We could not get complacent. We could not go around and celebrate two and a half stars forever. We're going to celebrate it for another week or so. I sent that, that, that press release to the news, and of course, nobody wanted to hear that. Nobody picked it up or posted it, but it doesn't matter because we're going to keep...
Did you see anything about the football fight?
Yeah, they said something about the football fight for two and a half weeks. But for, for this, we got maybe a half a sentence in, in the newspaper. But it is what it is because we're going to keep telling our own story. Okay?
How many stars can you get for the report?
Five total. Five total. Five total, yeah.
So you said something that I didn't know. So students that are at all levels get tracked when they leave, when they leave the school? If we keep them on books, that can count against us with chronic absenteeism?
Yes, in a sense. And Ms. Anderson is here. Can you kind of explain how that works?
Yes, so until a student has officially enrolled in another school district or other school, they are out until we can confirm that they have officially enrolled in a district, whether that be another district in Ohio or another district in any of the...
So you almost have to have dedicated people to tracking that all the time?
We do. At this point, yeah, absolutely. And we, and we, we have, and that aspect of, of our data dive has gotten a lot better. We've, we've dedicated the administrators in the building, the counselors, our attendance specialists who, who pushed that initiative. But, but there's still other things that we, that sometimes are just even out of our control. You know, if we get a kid in, you know, we, we put something on the table today, if we get a kid that rolls into, enrolls in our district, and we have to set up transportation for that kid. Say, for instance, it's a student with special needs that needs some, some different services. If they enroll in the district and then they, but they, we can't get them set up for transportation for four or five days, that counts against us. So we, we've got to figure out a way to look at every little detail to try to, to try to ensure we don't miss this mark again. And, and if we don't miss the mark, I mean, if we do miss the mark, what that means is it's a kid that's not in school getting an education. So this, it's just not about stars. It's just about kids and, and, and getting, getting them what they need. So yes, there are a lot of other things that we, we have on the table to try to continue to bring that chronic absenteeism rate down, which is an issue in, in districts like ours all across the country. So we're working on it. Any more questions for Ms. Murdock or myself? So with that being said, let's, let's give us a round of applause for another four or five days. We're going to be excited about this, and then we're moving on because we got to get better.
Item number three is our board report.
Okay, the first item I have for the board report is I am coming back around to the Vouchers Hurt Ohio resolution that was asked to be shared with the board and taken in consideration for approval. One question that was asked by Ms. Currington, I believe, was, was it a yearly cost or the $2 per student, was it a yearly cost? So we did do some research on that and spoke to the folks at Vouchers Versus Ohio. Yes, the $2 per student would be a yearly cost. So we circle back around to the first presentation, you know, for, for consideration. And if we do want to join this program, you know, we're looking at roughly $5,000 a year that we have to contribute to, to this policy advocacy group. So I, I say all that to say, it is, it is a huge issue that public schools are dealing with, because for every dollar that funnels out from, from us is, is a dollar that, you know, that we lose for spending on the kids that are here in the, in the district. So I'm not asking, again, you know, I know we talked about this last week, if you need some more time to think about it after the information that I gave you, feel free to, we don't have to, you know, we don't have to vote on it tonight. You guys don't have to vote on it tonight. But Ms. Currington did ask for that information, and I wanted to make sure I followed up with regards to, to the yearly cost. $2 per student, $2, $2.25 per student? So at 2,500, 2,600 kids, $5,000, $5,000 a year? Yeah, 15 over the next three years.
Well, with that, isn't the last board meeting, when Mr. Lumpkin told us about this, about what, three points, something there?
Well, I mean, if you look at the financial report, when you look at some of the cuts that are coming from the state, I think it's evident where those funds go. They go to places that can be allocated to different forms of education, all the way down to who we bus to our schools. So I think the budget tells us that vouchers hurt public schools in Ohio.
Yeah, absolutely.
So he referenced the previous presentation, and I think that it is a clear picture of what's being done in public education, and it's deliberate. Even in the results that we just talked about, I don't want to get on the attention. I wait for my board comments on that, but I think we should do it. That's just my thought.
We agree.
So the next step would be...
We agree.
So, so the next step would be to put a motion on the, on the floor to, to vote for the board's participation in the Vouchers Versus Ohio program. You can be at the next board meeting, or you can do it now. So I will leave that up to you.
I want to bring the motion. So I'm bringing a motion to, to participate in the voucher.
That, that, yeah, put a motion on the, on the floor to approve the board to participate in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio program.
Madam Currier?
Are you on board?
Yeah.
At the, at the cost of $2 per student?
I need a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll see.
Mrs. Adams, it's been moved to second. Would you please call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Currington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to participate in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio.
Okay, so our, our next steps will be to have President Cherry, myself, and Mrs. Adams sign the resolution, and then we will send it to the, to the policy group. They will give us, give us a, a declaration of participation, and then we will join all of the lobbyist activity with regards to the Vouchers Hurt Ohio program. Okay, and I'll keep you guys updated on, you know, our, our addition to the website and all of the information that they, that they send out about the, about the action, the information that's going on in Columbus. Okay? All right.
All right. Next on the board report, item B, is the request of approval for the tax abatement for the two properties from local gated properties.
Right, and we do have members of the Triwood CIC, the director, and I don't know, Mr. Williams, are you the assistant director or? Project manager, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the important title you got over there. So Mr. Williams and of course Chad, I called him Chad, I'm going to call him Mr., Mr. Downing, they came and presented the information with regards to the request for the tax abatement over the next couple of years with the, the payout of, of each of those properties. So it, although it is an abatement, it is a contribution to the, to the district with the annual, annual compensation and the intent to, to have opportunities for our students to participate in internships. Mr. Lumpkin, myself, Chad, the city manager, assistant city manager, we met a couple of, a few days ago and kind of reviewed the agreement. Mr. Lumpkin, do you, do you have anything you want to add to our meeting?
Yeah, just, just an update on some things that changed in the abatement process. We talked about the internships in debt, so one of the things that gated property presented to us was to pay out on those internships regardless of if they were filled or not. So the amount of them still being paid even when students went into it. They also talked about putting together a program that we're going to work with curriculum on developing that actually ties into some of our manufacturer days and ties into preparing students to be able to take on those internships. I put a lot of pressure on Chad and Derek to make sure that the internships happen because over the last few years, they've just been paying us the money, which is good, but it's better for our kids to be able to take advantage of the workforce that's being built right down the street. So the two companies, Beyoncet and Westrafo, are going to be participating in those. I also said that we should have some sort of internship with gated so that we could understand their process of being able to bring businesses to Triwood, and so that we can teach our students those processes. And they agreed to do some programming in the school that I think is, that I think is good, so.
And, and I think, you know, even pigging back, piggybacking on, on Mr. Lumpkin's comments, I, I think it's, you know, important... I, I think it's, you know, important for us to, you know, to kinda rationalize. You know, we look at our five-year forecast and, you know, we, we, in general, maybe think about, why are we going to, you know, why are we going to allow something like this to happen when we're struggling financially? But I think what the board and, and the community have to understand, it is also our responsibility to invest in our community.
The, the other part is, and we, we haven't talked about this a lot on the state report card, part of the reporting now is workforce development and the activities for students to be prepared for it, which right now Tralwood Madison Schools are one star on the report card for. Programs like this can help us close that gap without just adding burden to our teachers for the partnering of local businesses to make sure that those things can happen, so...
And, and the, the fact that gated has also decided that, you know, we're gonna provide these internships, we're gonna, we're gonna give you this fee, you know, uh, and, and we really don't know what that, you know, that tax rate would be, but what, what we believe is that as a partner with the city, it, it is a contribution to growth, you know, and if, if the city grows, we grow, then everybody wins, so that's my two cents on that. So my, my next request would be for a resolution via consent of the two, um, the two, the compensation agreement and the, um, both, excuse me, the compensation agreement for global properties for both of the, both of the facilities that, um, that they are, that have been identified. And the copy of the, of the resolution and the compensation agreement are, they're redlined copies, so, uh, our attorney will, will, uh, clean everything up. But, um, talking to Chad today, we needed to make sure we get this, get this passed so they can move to CTC and, and do what they need to do with CTC, so... Yeah, absolutely.
I have some documents here that outline the, the agreement that we put together for, for you all. This is just a good example of giving you a good summary of what's within those legal documents and their relationship there with gated, so we have full understanding of the scope and the new framework. Um, just to reiterate, in the past, it would have been a payment in lieu of an internship being filled. Now they're gonna be making those contributions regardless and creating the internships. And then additionally, as, as Mr. Lumpkin outlined, they're gonna be running and setting up a seminar, they'll be sponsoring, hosting and facilitating on at least a quarterly basis if not quarterly. So, this is really just a foundation for a much broader relationship that we can establish with them in combination with the companies and obviously the city and the CIC. So, this, again, just to reiterate also, understanding the fiscal constraints that schools are under, this does not eliminate taxes that are currently in place. This, without this abatement, the financial dollars and cents wouldn't work for a new building, we wouldn't be able to attract a company, we wouldn't be able to be competitive with the marketplace. So without this type of support from the school district, this project wouldn't happen, therefore no new taxes would be included. Something to remember, though, the long-term investment is that after fifteen years, under state law, there's no way to extend this.
Right.
So that, that new value will be realized. So if, if you're, about thirteen years from now, you're gonna see the first building, fourteen years from now, you're gonna see the second building, and then these two will follow in fifteen years. So the schools really stand to gain, I know that's fifteen years away, and we're talking about long-term investments and the growth that you're making here. So, this is something that we're gonna continue to partner with. And something else that's always notable is gated, has always been there when needed for, for additional donations to support the schools, and they make that insurance, and they're always gonna be here. And I think that we can use this as a foundation for further pathways of partnership.
Thank you.
I appreciate you answering the questions, but appreciate you being here again, and, uh, hope that's always in schools supporting our economic development.
Thank you.
So I need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Need a motion?
I motion.
My second.
Mrs. Adams, it's been moved to second, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the approval of the tax abatement for the property, global gated properties. Next, item four is our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve Life Touch Box Top for education and American Income Life Commission checks from Madison Park.
Motion?
My second.
Mrs. Adams, it's been moved to second, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. Next up is our treasures report. Am I moving too fast?
Just give me a quick second. Okay, I, um, attached to the agenda tonight, I have three reports for your approval. The first is our cash reconciliation, uh, report, and, um, this is the report for the month of August. Our bank statement balance is three million, five hundred sixty-five dollars, five, sorry, three million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our investment account balance is twenty million, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Our total bank and investment cash balance is twenty-four million, five hundred four thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-two cents. And that, um, bank balance matches our book balance in the financial system. So there is that report. Also, our spending plan summary report, which tracks our revenue and expenses for the month, and then our checks over one thousand dollars, all three of those are for approval tonight. We did have a finance committee meeting tonight. We, we looked at all of these reports. There were a couple of questions about the checks over a thousand dollars. One was the first one you see on the list to, um, Savis Learning, and that, um, is a, a pretty substantial purchase, that is a new English language arts curriculum for our middle and high school. The other question was, um, about the check to Kettering Adventist, and then that just was a reminder to us that we'll see those checks going to them for athletic training services because we switched providers, so it won't be Premier Health, it will be Kettering, um, Kettering Health. So, um, those, uh, reports are for your approval tonight.
Are there any questions? Then I need a motion to approve the August twenty-twenty-five financial reports.
My motion?
My second.
It's been moved to second, Mrs. Adams, would you call the row, please?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore? Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for our August twenty-twenty-five financial reports.
Okay, the other thing that I have on the agenda for approval tonight is the, um, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Are there any questions? Now I need a motion to approve the August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Call a motion. My second.
Simmons?
Yes.
Second, okay. All right.
Mrs. Adams, it's been moved to second, would you call the row, please?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin? Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, the motion passes.
And that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Item number six, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, better president, I do have, uh, a few items this evening. Uh, the first three are for information. The, um, the last, of course, the personnel agenda is for approval. The first item, denoted A, is requesting approval for accept, to accept the donation from the Tralwood Madison Educational Foundation to Madison Park Elementary. If you look at the attachment, you will see that the TMEF has donated a thousand dollars to Madison Park uh, for, um, for Mrs. Mallory, and you see the letter from, uh, Mrs. Hurd. This will, uh, go to a variety of different things going on in the building, uh, activities, festivals, attendance campaign, a lot of different things going on in the building with regards to, to, uh, the donations. So, that is for information this evening. Item B is approval of Life Touch First Place Spirit Ware and American Income Life Commission checks for Westbrook Village Elementary. If you look at the attachment, there are letters for each of those three checks, about three hundred plus dollars from Mrs. Harden for these same types, same types of things, incentives, incentives, activities, et cetera.
The reason why we don't, we have a donation like that, but we don't just put those for action instead of waiting until the next meeting?
Well, uh, it's probably precedent, but precedent is here to be changed, so, I mean, we...
Yeah, we can.
Like, I mean, we're gonna hold up the donations to the students for another two weeks for what?
Yeah, well, yeah, we can, we can definitely, we can definitely do that, yeah.
Will we have to change the agenda to do that, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all wanna do it or not? Y'all looking to be like, everybody's looking to be like...
It makes sense!
I, I just don't understand, like, why we have items that are getting donated to our students and we're waiting until the next meeting, but then to be approved.
Well, traditionally, it's because it was the business meeting and the public meeting, so this was the business. But, but like anything else, that can be changed. Yeah, that can be...
Can I put a motion on the floor to change these to action? Can I do that? Okay? No? All right, or change the agenda?
Yeah, we would've, yeah, we would've had to do it after, yeah, after again.
I was gonna bump yes, but I, I gotta, I'll be at Dallas and make a name, sorry, guys.
But noted, and we, you know, and for future reference, yeah, we can definitely do that. And the, uh, the last one is a number C, student activity purpose statement and budget for the MH functional class at Tralwood Madison High School. And if you look at the, the attachment, it identifies the expenditures, how the money will be raised through, through fundraising, and it's signed off by, by the principal, assistant principal and the, uh, and the staff member. And last, uh, D, which is for action this evening, is, uh, the personnel agenda. Uh, the agenda was sent to you guys last week. Just for quick review, uh, human resources person, agenda. You have separation of services, appointments. Appointments, starting to see a lot of the supplemental contracts that are, that are starting to come in. And then, um, it concludes with a last page additional supplemental contracts. And I am asking for approval on this agenda item this evening.
As Superintendent Howard mentioned, he has already provided us with the personnel agenda for our review. Do you have any questions?
No.
I need a motion?
I motion.
Mrs. Adams, it's been moved to second, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for our personnel agenda. Number seven is our discussion items and updates.
Okay, the only discussion item I have is I just wanted to make sure I reminded the, uh, the board that, uh, this coming Friday, our homecoming, our game tomorrow, excuse me, will be our homecoming game and our senior night combined. Um, you know, we are, again, in that situation because of our inability to, um, you know, to secure additional home games, which, uh, you know, is one of the, one of the pitfalls of not being in the league, but it is what it is. Our, our high school staff, Mr. McCray, who is so elegantly dressed in his throwback gear today, because today is, is, uh, spirit week, well, this week is spirit weekend, today was throwback day. Um, uh, Mrs. Howard, when, when I shared this with the administrators, when she left the house this morning, um, I looked at her like, where are you going? With those big old earrings on, and, but she explained to me, uh, what was going on. So, we're looking forward to, uh, senior night, I think we have fifty, forty-seven, forty-seven seniors that will be recognized, and then we have homecoming court that will be recognized as well with the, uh, with the recognition of the queen and the, the king and the queen as well. So, Mr. McCray and his crew have figured out how they're gonna get it done in twenty minutes? And, how many? Twenty-five minutes. So, apparently, the, uh, referees in the Ohio High School Athletic Association have agreed to allow us to get all this, all this done in, in a night, let alone we're playing, playing the number one or two team in the state of Indiana. Uh, so they're undefeated, our, our, our team is undefeated. We got senior night, we got homecoming, and we got a bunch of new regulations that we put in place that...
We got this.
That, you know, the...
We have this.
Yeah, the news has been talking about for two and a half weeks. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that tomorrow night is, uh, is gonna be a big night at Tralwood Madison High School. Mr. McCray, you got anything to say about that, tomorrow, about the... Oh, we also have two reunions, the class of ninety-five and the class of two thousand five. So it is a lot going on up there tomorrow, so if you're able to come, please do. All right?
All right.
Let's see it all, that's all I have.
All right. All right. Next up is our treasurer comments, Ms. Adams.
Yes, I, I would just like to say congratulations to all of our staff and students, um, for the progress on the most recent report card. It's, it's been great for me, starting my fifth year here, looking back to four years ago where we were and the progress that we've made, and it's a really exciting time to be, um, on this team in Tralwood. So, that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Howard, superintendent comment?
Just a, just a few things, um, I do want to, as always, ask you to make reference to your, um, your folder that I provided you. The first thing in the folder is a copy of the updated strategic plan. So, um, as I stated with the board, it is, is denoted as A in the folder. As I stated with the board, we are going to provide, uh, some continual updates on our progress with the strategic plan. This document is latest strategic plan progress update. So, what we have done over the last couple of weeks is I've worked with, uh, some members of the cabinets, members of the staff, and as I stated before, we are going to, we have developed, not going to, we have developed some action steps that are measurable, so if you turn that strategic plan over, you will see for each of our strategic goals, we have refined a lot of information into three action steps. So, starting October first through, uh, our strategic plan and our action steps, we are, you are going to start to see a lot more information from myself on how and if we are making progress on our action steps with regards to our strategic plan. I will be sharing this information with the city. You'll see some visuals around, uh, the community and our, and, and in our buildings with regards to our three action steps and how we are working towards, uh, providing, uh, data and artifacts with regards to these actions, the action steps in, uh, in, uh, with full implementation. And I share with the administrators this, uh, this afternoon that all of the decisions that we make from, um, you know, from this point on and why I have an opportunity to serve in this seat, will have to fall up under our strategic vision and our strategic goals, along with number, our goal, our third goal, transparency and excellence, financial. It has to be, has to funnel its way through our strategic plan, and it has to be beneficial and adequate, and there has to be availability for us to do it from a financial perspective. So, uh, this plan will get a lot more, a lot more traction over the next couple of weeks uh, with a full rollout October first. Okay? Uh, next, just updates, B is a, uh, is a flyer for the Southwest Regional Fall Conference on October ninth. If you are interested in going, you can, uh, you can register yourself. Uh, last year, we did not attend this, no one attended this, and, uh, it is, again, just an invitational, um, invite, invitation for the fall conference, and I wanted to make sure I shared that with you. If you're interested, let me know. And I wanted to make sure I shared that with you. If you're interested, let me know. Again, RSVP on your own, but I wanted to make sure you had this information. Next is a copy of the calendar. I provided you this again because I know you probably lost the one I gave you last time. So I wanted to make sure you had a copy of that.
No face.
And then last, item D is a letter from the city manager of Trotwood that I wanted to read out loud real quickly. Dear Superintendent Howard, I would like to take a moment and congratulate you in the Trotwood Madison City School District on your recent 24-25 State of Ohio School Report Card results. The district's hard work and dedication towards delivering high-quality instruction are demonstrated in your recent progress, progress report. Your efforts are not going unnoticed, and we are aware that the Ohio Department of Education workforce uses this report card to provide families, educators and community members with an overview of how schools are performing in several key areas. These include achievement, progress, gap closing, early literacy and graduation rates, among others. And we wanted you to know how very proud we are of our school district and the measurable, measurable results it has achieved, it has achieved. Again, congratulations. If you need anything from the city of Trotwood, please do not hesitate to contact me, Quincy Pope, or anyone else at the city of Trotwood. Together, we are moving forward, and the best is yet to come. Sincerely, Quincy Pope, Senior City Manager, City of Trotwood. So just another acknowledgement with regards to the progress we're making here in Trotwood Madison City School. But let me say again.
Four days to celebrate?
Four days to celebrate, because we got a long way to go. But it is nice to get that acknowledgement from the city, especially in an environment that has not always been the best. We are really trying to work to develop a, an active and progressive partnership with the city, because if they win and we win, everybody wins, like I said. All right? That is all I have. I just wanted to share it with you guys this evening.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Howard. Board comments. Mrs. Carrington?
I'm just going to start with a quote by Nancy Mandela. Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. And I just want to thank you educators for doing what you do for our children, and it is starting to show off in the sports. I know we're only going to celebrate for four days, but I am elated about the progress that we are making. If we continue to collaborate together, work together, advocate for students, and just do the best job we can to get our children to school, I'm sure that we are going to have people, children that come out of Trotwood who do great, great things for our community and for the world. Thank you all for the work that you do.
All right. Next, Mr. Kilgore?
Thank you, Ms. Carrington. Congratulations also to the district for the 2024-25 State Report Card. Those improvements out of four, out of the six key areas, just continue to keep up the good work. It's exciting to see the district take off the way it has since I've been on the board. And then also, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Bean for Week Three, Band of the Week. That's always exciting, and I did get to catch that. So congratulations to the band. That's all I have.
Mr. Lumpkin?
I want to give congratulations to the staff, our administrators and teachers for all of the hard work that you're doing, regardless of whatever circumstances. Kids come to you guys every day, and we provide what, in some cases, is the most stable environment for them, and we're happy about the progress. A couple of things like that about the state report card, though, that are really unfair to the, to our administrators and to our teachers, the graduation rate that it says is 85%. You have to understand that districts like Trotwood Madison don't get kids that stay in the district from K through 12. So it's a, it's a, it's a very hard indicator when you talk about how graduation rates are calculated and the fact that we're having the progress that we're having with the extra work that you guys have to put in. I just want to commend you for it. I want to commend the high schools and the middle schools for being rated three stars and three and a half stars. There are a lot of people who always say they take their kids out of our district because of the education. You can't say that anymore, because our education is some of the best around, regardless of how much money the governor and our state representatives continue to cut from public education. So I just want to bid you congratulations. Congratulations to all our seniors that are going to get recognized tomorrow night. We talked about senior night and homecoming being in the same night, and some of those things are put in front of our students on purpose, because as we were more successful, people around here stopped wanting to play us. So we've got to play the number one team in Indiana, and they will not be number one after tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, no, they will not.
All right, so thank you guys for all the.
Go Rams.
Go Rams. Vice President, Mrs. Simmons?
I would like to say congratulations to our third grade students from Madison Park who read the mission statement this evening. That was Brylee and Talora. I hope I pronounced those right. Thanks to our teachers, our students and our parents. As Mr. Howard said, we're not going to congratulate forever, but improvement and the strides are definitely recognized. Thank you for, to our band, TM4, for participating at the African-American Wellness Walk this past Saturday. I've gotten a lot of community feedback on the band just being excellent. So thank, thank Mr. Bean for leading that charge. Again, just to lead with Mr. Howard's quote, in we work together, progress is possible. So let's continue. Go Rams.
All right. Well, thank you, Vice President. First off, I want to just give our condolences to the Dayton Public School District who lost a, another student. We have been there before, and it's, it's a tragic loss. So I wanted to just send a heartfelt condolences to the Dayton Public School family in reference to the student. Everyone on the board has already said what I wanted to say. So I just want to say congratulations to the district. I also wanted to make sure that I gave a shout out to Mrs. Anderson because her interview was just the bomb for our absenteeism, and I just wanted to give a shout out to her, but not just to her, to everyone who was putting forth an effort to ensure that our district moves and make progress. I really appreciate it. I want to thank Mr. Howard for his vision and raising the bar for our district and for our administrators. I really appreciate you, Mr. Howard, as well. So I want to, I know we're only going to celebrate for four days, but I'm still going to. I'm still going to say thank you so very much to you and your.
That four days is for everybody else. I'm not celebrating. I'm going to give, I'm going to give some people some grace.
Okay, well, four days, here we go. And that being said, I don't have any other comments.
I do have one thing to say. I want to acknowledge these two ladies here in, in the corner. This is Mrs. Gad and Mrs. Williams. They are the president and vice president of the TM Band Booster Organization, and there's some, some conversation that I'm going to be having with you guys with regards to some, some things that, that they'd like to share. And, you know, once I have conversation, then I will come back to you ladies. But I wanted to make sure that we do know you're here and we are, you know, we are going to have some conversations about what we discuss. All right?
Thank you. Well, if nothing else, I need a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official license or regulated individual per bill, E. Board Policy 0166 and ORC 121.22G1. Action may be taken.
A motion?
A second.
Mrs. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes, and we will enter into executive session at 6:49.
No, y'all can talk about as long as you want. Can't sit around here and snap our finger. I just have a couple of things.
Okay, Mrs. Adams, this right here is the three.
Just three times.
Okay, I want to make sure.
You have a good opinion?
Yes.